So hello and welcome everybody to this special session at the festival. My name is Anne Cook, you may have seen me already welcome you to the festival, but I am particularly delighted to welcome you to this first of our special sessions, lived experience. And now lived experiences isn't something that we've done at festivals before, but there was a feeling that it would be good to have this opportunity to bring in more about the patient experience, the lived experience. So many of the researchers here and so many of the posters and talks are about studying diseases. And for many of us, perhaps we haven't had the chance to actually meet people who are affected by these diseases. And so the lived experience sessions are the opportunity for you to actually meet people like we have here now, who are affected by neurological diseases such as dementia. Now, we're especially privileged today to have Nick Fox with us. Nick Fox is a group leader at the UK dementia research institute. He is professor of neurology and director of the UCL dementia research centre. He is particularly interested in the early diagnosis and differential diagnosis and monitoring of cognitive disorders, particularly neurodegenerative dementias. And he has a particular interest in the familial dementias. Now, Nick will be joining us on screen in just a moment and will be giving an overview, a quick overview of what these, the neuroscience of these dementias. And then Nick will be in conversation with our guest here today, Sophie Leggett. Sophie actually carries one of the genes that means that she will get early onset dementia. And so she has lived with seeing her mother have dementia and is now living with the experience of being a carrier herself. So Nick and Sophie will have some discussion between them about what that's like and also Sophie's involvement in the research that Nick is leading. After Nick and Sophie have been in discussion for a while, then we will be taking audience questions. And I would really invite you and encourage you to put in questions at any point during the session. If you just put them into the question tab, but you'll see lower right hand corner in this session and then we will pick them up at the end. So if I'd like to invite Nick to join me on, on stage now, and he will start off by giving us a brief introduction to this type of dementia. Thank you, Nick.
Well, thank you very much, Anne. And thank you very much to those who've joined the session. It's always a bit strange talking to a screen, so very different and to being able to look out and see people out there. But thank you very much for the invitation and thank you for taking part in this. So I'm going to, as Anne said, give a little bit of a background because obviously people will have different levels of awareness of Alzheimer's disease, of dementia. And I'll talk a little bit about familial Alzheimer's disease in particular, which is an area of, of research and clinical interest of ours. And we are extremely lucky to have Sophie join us today. So I actually imagine that quite a few people at the meeting today have personal experience of Alzheimer's disease because Alzheimer's disease is the most common cause of dementia. And dementia is increasingly affecting more and more of us. It's one of the most pressing health and, and social care issues of our, our age. And the chance that any one of us will have somebody that is dear to us with a parent, a grandparent, a partner, a close friend with dementia is very high, largely because Alzheimer's disease and many other dementias are very age related. So with populations that age, there's an increasing likelihood that somebody will develop dementia. And in fact, there are currently estimated 800,000 people with dementia in the United Kingdom. And I say estimated because actually many people don't even get a diagnosis, which is something that hopefully in the future we will, will do a better job of. And in part or in complete, the Alzheimer's disease accounts for the majority of those cases. Estimates vary, 50, 60% of all cases of dementia in the UK have Alzheimer's disease either solely as the cause or, or mixed as Alzheimer's plus some other pathology. Most people with Alzheimer's disease get an onset of clinical symptoms in their seventies or their eighties. And it is increasingly a feature of life in, in most developed economies as a result of this. But there still is a significant portion of people to have a symptom onset before the age of 65, which is arbitrarily called early onset or young onset dementia. It probably accounts for about five, six, seven percent of all cases of Alzheimer's disease. But that's still 20, 30, 40,000 individuals in the United Kingdom. So a really important problem. And very rarely, Alzheimer's disease has an autosomal dominant genetic cause or pattern of inheritance. And this is sometimes referred to as familial Alzheimer's disease or autosomal dominant Alzheimer's disease or genetic Alzheimer's disease. And it refers to a very rare number of families where the disease is inherited in an autosomal dominant fashion. And by that, as I imagine, most people will, will understand, it's, the gene is passed down from generation to generation so that an individual who carries this genetic mutation has a 50% chance of passing it on to one of their children. Of course, the, the non-autosomal dominant, non-genetic forms of Alzheimer's disease, which we refer to as sporadic Alzheimer's disease, also have genetic causes, but they are risk factors. And there are important risk factors, including most importantly, a gene called apolipoprotein E. But that's quite different to these early onset familial Alzheimer's disease that I'll refer to as familial Alzheimer's disease. And there are three genes which we now know in particular are responsible for the majority of this autosomal dominant Alzheimer's disease. That is amyloid precursor protein or APP and pricillin one and pricillin two. And these have an onset maybe as early as the thirties or even early in rare cases, but typically in people's thirties, forties or fifties, they start to develop problems. And in many ways, some of the symptoms are very similar to those people with a later onset, but just decades earlier. And pathology is like late onset Alzheimer's disease, amyloid plaques and neurofibrillary tangles. And so at the disease level, it's very, very similar. But the, the age at which people develop the symptoms of familial Alzheimer's disease tends to be relatively consistent within families. So if in a family, the onset had been in the fifties, it's very likely that that'll be so, but not entirely. And these genes are, mutations of these genes are what are referred to as highly penetrant. So it is very likely, but not inevitable, that, that somebody will inherit the disease. And there are been important exceptions to that rule. And they are a source of intense research to understand why some people rarely can carry a mutation and yet not develop the disease. Familiar Alzheimer's disease has contributed hugely to neuroscience and to our understanding of Alzheimer's disease. And it's done so in many ways. So firstly, it has led, because we've understood that what, how, what these genes do, it's understood, helped our understanding of the pathogenesis, how Alzheimer's disease might be caused, in particular, leading to overproduction or more amyloid genetic forms of amyloid beta, which then leads to a cascade of pathology which culminates in the symptoms. It's been key, these genes have been key to the development of transgenic animal models and to the development of therapies that we hope will be advantageous, not just for the familial Alzheimer's disease, but for all of Alzheimer's disease. And the study of individuals who are from these families who are at risk of the disease because by virtue of knowing it's in their family and the aged onset, have contributed hugely to our understanding of a long pre-symptomatic period, perhaps two to three decades before symptoms where first amyloid and then other features of the disease appear. And we now have biomarkers that can track these features in, in life. And so this has led us to this understanding of this prodromal or pre-symptomatic period. And that also opens up a wind of opportunity for people to be tested on treatments. And treatment trials are now starting for truly primary prevention. And there have been a number of studies already with secondary prevention. And by that, I mean that one may have the pathological features of Alzheimer's disease in, in one's brain, but not have symptoms yet. So clearly the time at which we particularly want therapies to be most effective. But all this research, this understanding of the disease, the, the, the search for therapies has only really been possible because of the truly selfless contributions of family members, of people like Sophie Leggett, who I'm about to introduce you to. I've known Sophie for a number of years and it is really a great pleasure for her to join us today. So Sophie, welcome and thank you very much. And I should say, it's very kind as well as very brave of you to speak about your own situation in front of so many people. But I think it's hugely important for people to understand more about these diseases. And we'll really hope that the people on this call will help us to make progress and to find treatments. So thank you.
You're welcome.
So I wonder whether I might, might start by asking you, if you don't mind, to describe a little bit about how you found out that Alzheimer's disease was in your family?
So we, we actually took quite an indirect path to that because my mum and my auntie, who became symptomatic, my, and my, my, their mum, my grandmother, really kept it from us. We were all quite young and I think it was still, it still had a stigma attached to it and it was very much hidden.
Still, it still does, doesn't it?
Yeah, definitely.
That is one of the things that hopefully meetings like this will help to.
Yes, yes.
So, so was it kept hidden then in the family?
It was absolutely kept hidden from us. And even my gran would tell us that they'd been told that it was dementia, but there was a tablet you could take. You know what I mean? Everything was sort of minimized. We were never really given the truth. And it was actually through my auntie's GP who contacted the dementia research centre that my cousins were invited to meet you actually, to have the situation, they were all adults, they're young adults, very young adults. And you explained it to them, this possibility that it could be a genetic thing. And that really was where all of our lives changed, I suppose, because we had some factual information and we had some choices that we could make. And at that time, I chose to bury my head in the sand and pretend that it wasn't happening. That didn't work out very well for me. And then eventually my cousins kept drip feeding me little bits of information. And then at a certain point, I was like ready to find out about it and to face it. And that's actually the best thing that I ever did. It really did change my life.
But must have been, I mean, I think what you described is, is not that unusual. I mean, I think it's very understandable, your, 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 your initial feelings around that. Again, I know this, these things are very personal, but do you mind telling us a little bit about what you saw in your mum and, 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 and what, and, and the uncertainty around that initially?
Yeah, so I think that my mum had an idea that it was genetic and she had concerns, some concerns for herself. And she, we had actual major problems being heard by her GP. Even though we were giving, you know, him your contact details, saying phone these people, they can explain it to you. They, they really wouldn't accept that this thing existed.
And your, your mum was aware of her sister having had problems at this stage?
Yes, yeah. Yeah. And I, and I think that's probably why she, she originally went for an MRI scan and it did show a slight shrinking of her brain. I don't think anybody knew what to do with that information because that wasn't something that people in the hospital or the GP surgery had experienced before or perhaps didn't know where to go to for more information about it. But, you know, we went with the full information, but, but really we weren't heard. And then I think by the time mum had some quite severe symptoms where, that were really affecting her ability to live and live independently. I think she actually only got her diagnosis just before she was sectioned and, and had to be looked after securely to, to get some medication to help her.
And, and what did you?
Quite scarred by all of that.
Oh, I'm sure. It must have been dreadful. With, I mean hindsight's an amazing thing because you can always see a bit better that way, can't you? But looking back, what were the first things that made you feel that things weren't right with your mum? Again, if you don't mind sharing.
Yeah, the one thing that really stands out to me was, I was probably about 17 or 18 and she had a file of facts. We didn't have phones that did things. She had a file of facts and she was absolutely obsessed with every single thing going in her file of facts for what she was doing on certain days. And I know that she'd missed a few appointments. And at the time, I probably wasn't really looking out for those kinds of things in her.
Why would you, she was, she would have been young. What sort of age was she at that stage?
I would say she was, that was actually probably before she turned 40 or yeah, around about that time, which, which is kind of a standard age for, for my family, for these things to happen. So, but I, I think I didn't want to see it. I, I can remember her missing, meeting up with a friend and I can remember her missing hairdressers appointment. And I can remember her being really stressed out about it. And, and me probably knowing and me probably doing what everybody else does in that situation, thinking, no, it's fine, everything's gonna be okay. This isn't happening to my mum.
And, and what was the next thing that you saw in your mum beyond the sort of forgetfulness and missing appointments, which as you say, is a very common early feature?
So she became very, very anxious all of the time. She did things like compulsive shopping, like buying lots of things that she, she had an obsession with cuddly toys and teddy bears and things like that. And buying 15 of every cleaning product and body lotion. She, I think she was trying to make an escape route out of the relationship that she was in at the time and was stealing money. I'm not judging her on that. And, and she changed. I, I think the thing when I noticed it most was when I was pregnant with my daughter and I had my daughter and she just wasn't doing what I felt my mum should or would have been doing to support me. I also remember on her, I think on her second birthday, her buying my daughter a dress, which was about two years too old for her, so not even a little bit out. And she was just anxious about everything.
Yeah.
She really did change as a person. And I wish, the one thing that I do wish is that I wish that then I knew and understood what I know and understand now, because I would have been a better daughter to her, you know, if I, if I knew what I know now and had the experience that I have now. I'm very sad for that.
Yeah, well, these things are so, and the, the story you describe is, is not at all uncommon of, of how these things are so difficult for people around. This, this is, in all this affects whole families, not just individuals. And, and then, so that must have all been very, very difficult. What, tell me a little bit about what you then did. You, you described about knowing, finding out that there was a possible gene in the family and, and then that. And then you, did you then get involved in the support groups or what was the, what were the steps that took you from?
Yeah.
Connect the dots for us.
So the big thing that changed things for me was when, when mum died. And it was really important, I knew that my cousins had signed up to have their brains donated to Queen's Bank. And I hadn't been able to even think about that. And at the point when we know that, knew that she was going to go very soon, I contacted them and said, look, mum hasn't done anything. Can we sign? Can we ask for this to be done? What do we need to do? And obviously they were amazing, like whilst I'm crying down the phone. They were absolutely fantastic. We arranged for mum's brain to be donated. And I knew that could be used for research for a really, really long time, for a load of different things relating to Alzheimer's. And I then emailed, it was Yu Ying at the time, I think, at the DRC and said, what can I do? My cousins are doing this stuff. Well, how do I sign up? You know, how quickly can I see someone? You know, you can do anything you want to me. And, and it was that really, that really changed my life and made me realize that in this situation, like I knew I had this 50/50 risk. And nobody wants that, but if you can find one good thing that can come out of it, research has to be it. You know, I, I know that the data that has been collected from me over many, many years will keep doing some good, people will still keep learning something new from it. And hopefully in a future, in the future, there will be a future where it can be stopped or slowed or, yeah, never happens.
Yeah, well, we want everybody on this call to help us with that. And, you know, for, for those people on the call, Sophie has donated blood, skin, had lumbar punctures. You've had several lumbar punctures, haven't you Sophie? And you've also taken part in drug trials as well.
Yes. And so I started the drug trial, I think it is now six, seven years ago. I did five years on the drug trial, going down to Queen Square every four weeks for a drug dose and cognitive tests. If any of you researchers are watching this and you have anything to do with the data from cognitive tests, just know that everybody hates that. It's the worst, that I would rather have a lumbar puncture any day of the week than do my cognitive test. So I have done that, I was on the drug trial for just under five years. It came to its conclusion. We then had an open label extension and started just before Christmas. So I'm back down there and, and that has just been a really positive thing in my life. And yeah, I love it. I, that, that year when there was nothing going on was very strange. My, my life is now back to its normal of going down there every four weeks.
Well, you've been terribly generous. Wanted to ask you about your decision about, if you don't mind, about getting a genetic diagnosis yourself?
Um, yes, so I had for, for many years thought that I could never know, mostly because I have a daughter and the second I knew that I had it, I then knew that she had a 50/50 chance. And I also know what it feels like to live with that 50/50 chance. And I couldn't ever cope with thinking about the fact that I had given her that 50/50 chance. And the thought of telling her that I didn't have it was amazing, but the thought of telling her that I did have it was unbearable really. And then I get, got to a point in my life where there was things that I definitely wasn't doing because I didn't know whether I was going to get it or not. So changing jobs, moving house, all of these things concerned me because I thought if I did get it, these wouldn't be great things for me to, to be doing. So my poor husband didn't want me to get tested, but I had to do it. And I tested positive. We coped with that really quite well. And I think it has just made us realize, I've always been a do everything now, whatever you want to do, do it, because you don't know how life is going to go, what's going to happen to you. And he's now on board with that, hence the fact that we've just bought an American school bus to go travelling in. So, so it's actually been really positive for me, you know, I, I think for most people who are in my situation with this 50/50 chance, our assumption is always that we have got it, because then you haven't got a future to lose because you haven't allowed yourself to build.
You've managed, you've managed your expectations, don't you?
Yes, yeah.
Well, these must be really, really tough things. And I, I, there's, there's lots more I wanted to ask you, but I just wonder whether you, would you be willing to take questions from the audience?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, that's for, again, extremely generous, generous of you. And, and, and you, did you want to join us with any questions you've got? And I, you know, but before you do that, I'd just like to thank Sophie. I mean, I'll be, I'll thank you again, but I'll thank you already for sharing what is extremely personal for people to have heard what it must be like to see mother and aunt with Alzheimer's disease and then to carry the, the anxiety and the risk that you've been carrying. And give every, every bit of effort you have into research as well. So that's amazing. Thank you.
Anne. Just like to echo that as well. I think, I mean, I had an idea of what the session was going to be like and had the chance to chat with Nick first. And I'm incredibly moved by, by the power of what you've just said. So people who have come on here without knowing that, I think must be, must Um, so people who have come on here without knowing that, I think must be, must be very moved indeed. So thank you, thank you for that. Um, so if you do have questions for Sophie or for Nick, then I would just encourage you to to please put that into the the questions and then we will can start. Taking them here. Um, if I could start with a question to you, Sophie, um. I just wonder, I mean, you do see a lot in in the news, you see it in in popular press. Um, about research breakthroughs and they're often about dementia because it does affect so many people. Um, and I'm wondering, as someone who is so directly affected by this, how you find that? Do you find that encouraging? Or do you get kind of frustrated because it feels like things aren't moving quickly enough?
I I think I find it frustrating just because of the way, um, the media reports it. Um, so everybody who's auntie or cousin or, you know, or whoever is reading something. On social media or in a newspaper and they get their hopes, their hopes up about it because of how it's reported. It makes me really quite angry. Um, so I generally don't pay attention to anything. Um, unless it's from someone who I actually really trust and and they know what they're talking about. Um, I I I really do object to how it is reported. I I think good news is good, but it needs to be. You know, there needs to be some reality to it. So so this, this brilliant thing has been learnt from this thing. What it's gonna take is X number of years for an open label extension, but you know, they. That that doesn't ever go in the media that is shared with the general public. Um, yeah, so. That's it, my frustration.
Well, I, Anne, I'd like to add to that. So I often see people coming to my clinic and they say, well, I've, I've read this. Should my wife go on this thingy or whatever or could, should? And that, and that is hard for people and you can completely understand why people want it. It's, it's a reflection of how much this, this is now part of, of, of so many people's lives that it, it sells newspapers. So. That's understandable. I I wanna thank you, since you mentioned Sophie about, you know, reliable information. Would you just share with people what it's been like to be a part of a support group? Because that, that's been quite something.
So, um, so rare dementia support has been fantastic. Um, and one of the things, um, that has come out of that is. Um, I I went originally with my cousins who had been going for a couple of years beforehand. Mum and I have been like, no, I'm not going to that. Um, and then I went just after mum died. I think it was within months of her dying. I was like, I'm just gonna do everything. Um, and, um, that was really, really life-changing because people. I I literally did cry through the whole thing. Um, but not in a bad way, because people were talking about how they felt about something or how they worried about this. Thing happening or, um, and I suddenly thought, um, and this isn't quite true, I'm really normal. With these people. Um, to, because I thought that I should be dealing with it better and I shouldn't be worrying about stuff, I shouldn't be crying about things. And all of these people, um, were experiencing my feelings. Um, and that was, um, that was really quite amazing and and it was through rare dementia support that I've made loads and loads of friends. So in, rather than just in the support group meeting, um, pre-COVID, um, we would, you know, several of us would meet up and just have drinks. And we'd talk about it for a while and have a cry and really eat loads of food and it just brings this weird thing into a really normal environment. Um, yeah, I've got great friends that I've met.
Because these are, these are very rare, you know, your G P may never have met somebody, there may be nobody within miles with, with, with.
Yeah.
So you can make a connection. Were there other questions, Anne? I've got other things I'd like to ask, but I should, should let other people.
Um, I'm, I'm, again, I've got another one for myself, if that's okay. If you don't want to answer this, that's fine. I've, I've got others up my sleeve. I just wondered if you are happy to share, I think, um, something that I, that I feel very strongly, like how do you have that conversation? With your children? So you've talked a little bit about, you know, you've seen your, your mother and your cousins and your aunt. And then you have the decision yourself about whether to go for genetic testing, but then you know, how the implications for your children?
So, um, so I've, I've got two stepchildren and I've got, um, my, my own daughter. Um, when, when mum died, um, we told her, I'd actually kept my daughter away from seeing my mum. Because I didn't want her to see what my mum was like. And I, I wished that had been different. I wish I knew I was a wiser. Um, back then, um, but that's what I did. She saw mum at the end of her life, which wasn't, um, pretty, do you know what I mean? Um, and we talked to her, we talked to her, um, about, she, she was, I think just being twelve. Um, we talked to her, um, at some point, um. We told her that I had a fifty fifty chance of it happening to me, but that everything was fine at the moment, so we didn't really need to worry about that. Um, when I, I I think one of the really good things about the drug trial is. I went, I visibly left the house to go and see what I called my drug dealer in London every four weeks. Um, so it, it just opened, being involved in the research opened up conversations in our family where we could talk about it. Like any other kind of normal conversation. Um, when I decided to get tested. Um, I told her, she was then just doing her A levels. Um, I told her that I was thinking about getting tested, didn't tell her that I was doing it. I said that if I did that. Would she want to know? Would she want to wait until she was a certain age before? I told her how it went. Um, and, um, she said, I can just tell her. Um, in fact, both her and my husband were convinced I didn't have it. Don't like, there's no way you've got it. Um, and when we came back from me getting my results. Um, she was, um, the first person that I told her and I, I just called, sent Chris out and. I called her in to come and get into bed with me and I told her and had a cry and then she laughed at me for crying. And she said, that's fine, you know, you're still you, nothing has changed. Um, but obviously it will change. Um, she has, um, tentatively talked about genetic testing. Um, and I said all the right things and, you know, that's fine, but you're very young, you don't need to make that decision now. But if you did want to do it, I'd come with you, I'd not come with you, you could tell me, you could not tell me. Um, yeah, and then I went upstairs and solved it on my own. Because the, the thought of her finding out that she had it and me knowing that would, um. Would be the worst thing in my world. Um, yeah, but I think e- everybody does it their own way. I, I think, I, I never thought I would do it and then I sort of, I really. Completely changed my mind about it. I was absolutely adamant. There was nothing that was gonna stop me from doing that and it was the right time for me and. She will know if and when it's the right time for her and she'll have the right people around her. Um, from our family, from our friends, um, and also from the rare dementia support team. Who, who are actually fant- fantastic, just to point out, um. It is amazing to be able to contact someone at Rare Dementia Support, um, you know, i- in a meeting or, um, or online. Email or, or however, and not have to explain the situation that you're in and for them to just know. Because most people, when you tell them, they gasp and you almost feel like apologising for telling them this awful. News that actually you're okay with, um, and you're almost apologising to whoever you're talking to about it.
Thank you, thank you. I think that's, um, very brave of you to, to share. Um, so I really appreciate it. I think it's something that all of us. Shy away from a bit, you know, what, if that situation happened to me. So it's, it's really insightful to hear about. Thank you.
Yeah, and it probably goes beyond even fa- familial Alzheimer's disease, isn't it? These are, are tough decisions that lots of people are, are taking. And very tough conversations. Um, Sophie, you've, you've done some amazing things for, um, to raise funds as well.
Um. Yes.
I wonder whether you could explain your haircut?
So I was supposed to be doing.
It's not just a lockdown haircut like mine.
Um, I was supposed to be doing the London Marathon last year, I'm quite relieved actually that it was cancelled because I hadn't done that much training. Um, so, um, I decided to do a head shave, but I think, I, I think it was over three thousand pounds. Um, from that and, and I just decided not having hair that you have to do anything to, that's actually brilliant. So, um, my husband gets the dog flippers out every, every four weeks or so. Um, and shaved it again for me. I didn't think I would love it, but I really do.
Well, it's certainly, um, you're in good company with lockdown haircuts at the moment. Which is, which is, uh, quite, quite amazing. Um, I, I, one thing I wanted to, to ask you is. Um. In this audience, which is, will, I know it's strange, you're just like me looking at a screen, but. There'll be lots of people with lots of different backgrounds listening to this. What's, what would you want them to take away? Or what's the, you know, bearing in mind that. That this is a, lots of, um, well, i- i- I, I guess it, it, it's, it's very much a. A, a research and scientific, uh, community that you're talking to at the moment, um, perhaps more basic science and clinical science, but a mix. What, what would you, what message would you have for, you know, you've been generous to share your story? So what, what would you like of them or like them to take away?
Um, I think there's been a lot of disappointments for everybody who's been involved in research for, for. Um, any kind of dementia. Um, I think keep going. Um, I think remembering that whatever bit of. Data you're analysing or whatever bit of, um, cerebral spinal fluid or, or whatever it is. Um, that you're analysing and collecting data from, um, just remember that you are massively invested in that. But one person is fully invested in it because they chose to be part of that research. Um, and every bit of data is a part of a person, someone's contribution. Um, for something that is probably realistically not gonna help them, but is gonna help other people in the future. Um, it's, it's about real people.
Yeah, well.
Weird people like me.
Well, I, I certainly think that's very motivating. Um. There's a few questions coming in, aren't there?
Yep. So, uh, there is a question here, Sophie, about, um, why the cognitive tests are such a negative experience?
Because we do them every, depending on what bit of research we're doing, we do them every, every six months or a year. And no matter what, you are constantly trying to analyse, did I get as far on that stupid bit with symbols on? Um, as I did six months ago or a year ago, um, it's, uh, and, and all of my family and all of my, all of my friends that are involved in the research. It was like, oh my god, I've got this test today. I've actually proved it because it should have been on my birthday in June. And I said, can we just do it on any day that isn't my birthday, please? I, I, I went to sleep the night before a cognitive test.
I can.
Give me a lumbar puncture anytime.
I can completely echo. I've, people from, uh, individuals who are at risk say to me, I'll have a arterial line, I've had a PET scan. Whatever, but, but it's, you know, those things, you, you don't, you're, you're not judging yourself, you're not questioning yourself, you're just having a scan. The scanner's not gonna say to you, uh, 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 um, while you're in, lying in the scanner.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, but, but so that, that anxiety, I guess, is.
Yeah.
There's, there's one here, it's a little bit of a, a long question, but an important one. Um, acknowledging that both efforts are extremely important. Do you feel that treatments to slow disease progression or to treat the associated psychiatric symptoms of dementia such as agitation or depression, et cetera? Would be more effective to support people living with dementia and their families on a day-to-day basis? Um, so, yeah, is it better to focus on stopping the disease progression or to tackle the symptoms?
I, I think it has to be both of them. I, I don't think that either one of those things is more important than the other one. I think they're completely different. We definitely need something for now for people who are living with it now, but we also need to be working towards something which will hopefully stop people. From having to live with it.
One, one, one thing I can add to that, uh, you know, I, I completely agree with Sophie's, um, answer there. It's worthwhile thinking that we, out of every ten pounds that dementia costs the UK economy. Um, we spend, um, a few pence on research. So it's the, 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 it's, it's actually care, um. And, and, and social care costs that are, that are huge. So, um, I think a lot of people would like. Um. More research out of, out of that because it's sort of, it feels a little bit like you're not dealing with the cause, but, but the consequences.
Yeah. Um, so another question here, maybe for, for both of you, just, um, asking whether the detection methods, the genetic tests are easily available on, on the NHS.
Well, that's, 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 that's a question in two parts, isn't it? Um. Sophie, do you wanna mention a little bit about the process? Because it's, it's not just like, you know, putting your arm out and having a blood sample, is it?
No, so, um, if you go for a genetic test, first of all, you need to convince your G P that you've got a reason. You know, valid reason and a family history in order to go for that. Um, you then are referred to a regional genetic centre. But I asked to go down to Queen's Square and, and I got mine done there. Um. You can, I mean, I have friends who went for genetic testing and they were told by their regional centre. That their particular mutation wasn't hereditary and you'll know who I'm talking about. Um, and, um, and the frustration of being, having built up the courage to, to do this thing, for someone to say, no, that's not right. That doesn't exist, that doesn't mean that you'll get it. So I think that knowledge, even in specialist genetic services. Um, it'd be really challenging, but, um, once you are through that, once you start it, it is really important that you are counseled through the. Process and, um, I think for some people that's really useful and there's no timeline for it. You can have more counselling sessions whilst you talk through more things. Um, and for some people, they can go in after their two or three sessions. And, and they and their, um, the geneticists that they're dealing with, um. Will be happy for them to get their results after that. Um, it is a good process and it is, is done that, done in that way. For particular reasons, because it is huge news that you are gonna have to live with and it doesn't just affect you, it affects your whole family. Yeah.
And as we often say, it's, it's knowledge you can't unknow. So it's really, really, really important that people do know what they're.
Yeah.
What they're letting themselves in, in, in for. And I actually think the UK has got, got, is, is pretty well set up and the NHS is pretty good. There are barriers. And there are things that go wrong, but, but largely it should be possible, uh, for people. Unlike in some other parts of the world, that you can get the genetic testing.
Yeah.
On the NHS. Thank goodness.
Yeah, in America, they cost them fortunes to get it done and has far worse implications for their insurance and things.
Right. Gosh, yes, that's enough thought, isn't it? So it's, it's, it's possible to get them, but it's important, it's actually, it's not just the test, it's all the kind of process.
You can't get just the test, it is, it is the counselling and everything that goes with it.
So we are seeing people sending off samples to twenty-three and me and, and getting results sometimes which are. Difficult for them to understand and there's absolutely no support. So people have been sent something and they've, you know, what does this mean? And, you know, hopefully, the, you know, somebody like Sophie will have gone through. So actually by the time she chooses to take her result or not take her result. She knows what she's letting herself in for. And, and people do go through all that, have blood samples taken and then decide, actually. I, I won't collect my results, or at least I won't collect it now.
Yeah.
Which is a good thing.
Yeah.
People can have that at any point.
Such a, a big thing, isn't it? That you, you don't take it too lightly. You can't take it too lightly. Um, there's a, there's a brief follow-up here, comment on, on the, um, the cognitive testing. Um, and they're just wondering, would it be reassuring to be told the results of your previous test and how they compared? Or is it better not to know that?
No, I don't want to know.
Okay, I guess the answer to that is you, you ask the individual whether they want to know or not.
Yeah.
But it's a, it's, it's a great question because, you know, sometimes people do say. Hmm, you know, what, for my research, for example, for clinical trial, it, it has to be blind. You can't let, you can't distort things. And actually, it, it is difficult.
Hmm.
It's a good question.
There's another important, I think really important question here that actually I was going to ask if somebody else didn't. Um, but you mentioned around that the stigma surrounding dementia, um, particularly experienced about the, the older members of your family. Um, are there any surprising or disappointing preconceptions from members of the public or medical professionals today? And what would you like to see improve?
Um. I think that, I think there is still stigma nowadays, um. I think that there is still a generation of people who would. I think that there is still a generation of people who would feel uncomfortable talking about what's going on in their family. Um. I haven't experienced it just because I've been open about my situation. So by the time anything happens, like everyone I know knows that this is going to happen to me. Um. I think I think the most difficult thing that that happens with dementia and and not really with any other diseases is that you do get abandoned because your um friends, your your circle, your even your family um don't know how to help. And spending time with someone who's got dementia that you care about or knew as a different person, do you know what I mean, when they were well, that's really uncomfortable. Um, and I think that's that's something only the media that could ever really change that in showing how family can still go and spend time, friends can still go, because that's where I think probably with dementia um the the family, the the carers, the family carers um really end up in, I think, the worst case scenario of any disease, where they just get dumped by everybody, basically. And that and that's because nobody knows how to be around this person who has changed and um, you know, do things like talking to the husband or wife, but not actually talking to the person who's living with dementia who's sat next to them. I I I don't know if that will ever change.
I mean, from your own experience, from um, you know, experiencing it from your family members, have you any advice? Or I think a lot of us do feel fearful of of saying the wrong, getting it wrong. Um, is there anything that you can say is helpful or makes it easier for someone with dementia?
Um, I think just talking to them as though they could reply to you or uh, you know, and always talking to them. If they're in the room, you should be talking to them. You can include the other people that are in the room, but you should be talking to them. And not talking about, talking about them as though they're not in the room. That that I really hate that. That's really sad because that is a person.
Yeah. And you must at least cited that. You have to remember that that person is still there, even if they have. Uh huh. Yeah.
And and there are things that, you know, even if people's recent memories are not not, they're not so good at recalling things, there are one can, doesn't need to be patronising, you can still uh pick things that people are more able to share. Distant memories are often well preserved in talking about um things with people um.
It is about doing activities, you know, go and walk in with someone if they can, if they can still walk. I am going through photo albums, talking about what's in the photos or what's in the photos. I think there's always something that could be done. It it is still hard. I visited my cousin and I actually just want to sit there and cry. Um, and she can't communicate with anybody. Um, but I sit and we talk and we play music on my phone. Um, there's long pauses. Um, but she does know that someone is sitting there with her and 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 that makes it worth it.
Yeah, there's so much in our in our conventional approach to people. I mean, there's the uncomfortableness that that Sophie has described. And I think people do, they don't know what to do, as exactly as you said, Anne, it's sort of, it's difficult, but you know, our so some of our social norms are almost perversely designed designed to make things more difficult. I mean, what do we? What do we say when we tend to see somebody? We say, how are you? And how was your weekend? Almost the two most difficult questions for anybody with Alzheimer's disease to 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 manage, particularly if you can't really remember what happened last weekend. But that's what we do. It's part of our our convention, our social norms. Whereas to be able to say to somebody, uh as Sophie says, let's, you know, should we go go for a walk? Or doesn't it lift your spirits when the sun shines? Those are things that are easier.
Yeah.
People can relate to them. And one of the things that people often ask me about, you know, well, they can't remember that I've been there a week later, you know, what have I gained? And I think the the emotional response, that has a positive, that that is, goes beyond the remembering of the facts.
The the other thing that happens as well is when um when you tell someone something, um and they've forgotten that thing, or they're or the person with dementia is telling you something and then three minutes later tells you that thing again. And there's something that I read that said, just be so thankful that that person is so excited every time they think of that thing, that you're the person that they want to tell about it.
Oh, really?
And, you know, I think that's lovely. I I don't think anybody could ever do it, do any of this perfectly. But it is just trying what you could do and having a little cry outside when you get outside.
That's really valuable to know. I think, you know, we we are all afraid of getting things wrong, aren't we? But there's some just really useful nuggets from both of you there. And I think, like Nick said, your usual social conventions might not be the right ones, but just think of slightly different ones. Instead of thinking about last weekend, think about the present or the memories from a long time ago, and then you can still have a social connection. Yeah. Leading very closely on, there's a question here, um just asking what else can be done to help families and friends support those at risk of early onset Alzheimer's. Um.
Um, I think the best thing that you can do is just be there for them and not recoil when they talk about it because the more, as a person who is at risk or as a person who has a in particular person at risk, the more you say it out loud, the more it becomes okay. Um, which is why I have been so open about it. I hid it and hid it and hid it. Um, and then when mum died, I just told everybody. When she was poorly, I didn't really talk about it. Um. But when she died, when I acknowledged that I had this fifty fifty risk, I told everybody that I know that I had this fifty fifty risk and um. So all all of my friends would ask me any questions about it or say, how's the drug trial going? Or did you see this thing in the paper? Uh, but and and I really liked that. So I I'm no longer ever really having a big conversation with someone about it. Um, so just listen and ask questions.
Sophie, have you got anything to to add to that, Nick?
Well, yeah, I think, I mean, well, I know I have very little to add because Sophie's put it um perfectly and she's got the lived experience. For for the bit that perhaps that 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 Sophie and I should have mentioned is, is that even just going back to the previous question, which is, I guess, a little bit related to this, which is to recognise that the other people around may feel very isolated as well. That quite a lot of people I see um caring for somebody with Alzheimer's disease ends up finding, exactly as Sophie has described, because people are uncomfortable or embarrassed or they don't know what to do, they withdraw. So that person ends up being isolated just at the time they need to say to somebody, you know, I, gosh, I, you know, I didn't deal with this well. I should have been able. And they need people around them and to to be able to say if you, if it if if these situations make you feel uncomfortable, just try and and say to somebody, well, you know, anything I can do, you don't. And people don't have to have deep chats. They just may want somebody to talk about, I don't know, their lockdown haircut.
Um, there's I think one time for for one final question here. It's just um another one actually about uh supporting. What other forms of holistic support would you like to see? Um, so I guess, you know, aside from the the straight kind of medical support, um maybe I I think something about wider society. I mean, you've been very brave and talking about it openly and, you know, hopefully that makes it easy for everyone to talk about. Would you think see things more widely being supportive to to people with dementia or risk of early onset dementia?
Um, I think in particular with um early onset um dementia, any kind of social inter- social groups that there are that exist to support people with dementia, there are very, very few, even when they say younger onset. Very few of them are for people who are in their thirties or their forties, or the family of that person who is in their thirties and their forties. And that probably never, actually, I don't see how that would ever happen nationally. Um, you wouldn't be able to find that everywhere you go, but I think that a lot of people who are affected by young dementia go to something that even if it says young dementia and they get there and they know that this is not their kind of people, this is not the kind of age group, they don't have the same kind of interests. And I suppose that's really where where dementia support comes in, in particular with the virtual source of support that they can do as well.
Mm hmm, okay. Actually, there is uh one more question, which I overlooked, and I think it is a really good one. It talks about um whether to tackle the negative experience of cognitive testing, would it make sense to design these tests together with participants? Um, and if I may have kind of broadened that slightly, how uh the sort of patient involvement aspect of research, um if you have any comments on that, whether you think that's useful or whether you prefer just the researchers to get on with it?
So. So I would say I don't think anything, if we knew it was a cognitive test, we'd hate it. I don't I don't think there's a way to make it something that we would like. And I think it's only because we have got an idea of how we did previous time. Um, but I I think in relation to engaging with research participants, I think I've been with with the DRC and with the Domini Inherited Alzheimer Network, um which have which have done most of the research that I've been involved with have been absolutely amazing. So everything new that they're they're coming out with, there is a webinar, we can dial in, we can view it online. Um. And it gives us an update on what they're doing. But very importantly, it is asking us, would that work for you? Um, would that be too much pressure on you to do this thing? Would this be a stopper? Um, you know, what about childcare? And and every single step of the way, there are these questions. And they can't necessarily go with everything that we say. But everybody puts their their feelings about it forward. And I think, and because we're engaged, I think that's why we keep doing everything they ask us to do. Um, because we feel very much we are part of it. It is not them. It's not them in their labs. It's not them by their MRI scanners. Um, you know, doing their funding bids and and all of this stuff needs to happen, but they very much make us part of that and want to hear from us.
Hmm. That's, I mean, that's a really wonderful thing to hear, that you do feel truly involved in the research project and the research team. Um, and that you feel heard as well and you can be at that voice.
And I and I think the other thing as well is I I've got a study ID number, but I think at the DRC and I think at Wash U, they've got a good idea who everybody is. You know, they know we, wherever we go, we talk about what's going on in our lives, you know, they um they know us. And um I I feel like we and them are the team.
Fantastic.
And very lucky.
And from my point of view, it's it's a, it is a different relationship when somebody's in research than when I see them clinically. I think for clinically, I somehow have a sort of, I have a series of professional roles that I need to get through and that, you know, I hope I still have empathy, but that it is slightly different with when you, like with Sophie, I've known Sophie for years. Um, there are people I see in research where I knew their parents. Um, and that's a different relationship. But I I think I feel strongly that 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 families need to be involved in. And I think sometimes it's it's tokenistic. You, you know, this sort of patient involvement stuff or um, I think it's working out. I I I mean, I I doubt if Sophie would want to be asked whether, you know, some, I don't know, some test tube test should be running one way or another. Because and sometimes these are meaningless, but the things that really matter were, I mean, Sophie's the expert. She'll know what will be the barrier to her or a friend or 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 a relative taking part in research. You know, it's madness not to involve the experts.
Absolutely. And so important to to be able to carry on with that research. It's, you know, it would be, it'd be foolish not to, not to include that. I think that's that's come to the end of the questions from the audience. I I can't see um directly, but I hear that the response to Sophie has been overwhelming. So I think um you might want to check in on the chat afterwards, Sophie. I think a lot of admiration and respect and gratitude for you being open and talking with us today.
Thank you for having me.
Pleasure. Um, three very important things just to finish off with. One is, um, I would also encourage you, we have another lived experience um session during the festival. Uh, that's uh with Parkinson's disease and that's on Thursday, so I would encourage you to check that on out as well. The second really important thing is that Sophie is doing um a Thames walk. Sophie, do you want to just say a little bit about what that involves? And then I will, then I will bully people into going to support you.
So I'm doing the um taking on the Thames Path Challenge, which is a hundred kilometres. I'm doing it over two days because I'm not well, I couldn't do it in one day. Uh, and I'm walking it. I'm definitely not running it. I I'm hoping, Don't Think Is actually going to join us for some of it. Um, I've got a couple of friends doing it as well. And I'm doing it um specifically to raise money for the new Rare Dementia Centre, um which is being um built. And that will be a centre that brings everything together for people that are affected by the rare dementias. And because we have, we live in this different circumstance where, you know, we've got mortgages and and kids and all of those things. Um, and they're doing brilliant research on how to support families. Um, and yeah, that's what I want to do. I want to um, I want to raise money for that because um there will be nothing that isn't fabulous about this centre existing.
Fantastic. So I would encourage you, the link to go and support Sophie is in the session description. I had a quick look and I don't think you've got any support yet. So wouldn't it be fantastic if this festival really got the ball rolling on that? Um, so that's the second thing. The third thing is just, again, a massive thank you to both of you. Um, one of the more challenging sessions, no slides. We're always so used to hiding behind our slides, aren't we? So um thank you both for for being here and just talking openly about about your research and about your lived experience with dementia. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anne, and thank you, Sophie.